Which would have minimized the impact on the businesses. But they had a two-hour notice, or a two-day notice. I had people coming over that afternoon talking to me about it. Because it was barely enough time to do anything. It got delayed for weather, which helped. But in the end, it's easy to shut down a business like my own. All we have is a toilet. But the restaurants and bars? I don't know what the dental shop did. But these are all businesses that depend on water to operate. They can't do it unless they've got a very clear expectation and a minimum, a maximum effort to minimize the impact. How do we do this in the future so that they don't get impacted as badly as they did today?
I think there is more installing these valves first is for the rest of construction. We have fire hydrants to be replaced. And if we don't have, right now, they can't get parts for these fire hydrants. They have to be replaced.
I understand the reasons why we need to do it. I'm just trying to figure out how we can better manage it.
To me, I feel like we're managing it very well. I feel like the contractor's been very flexible in notifying. For me, if we put these at night or we try to do them in off-hours, then we're adding cost to the project. We're slowing the contractor down. There's safety concerns.
Add the cost to those businesses' operations.
Yep, and so if we get a water line leak, there's huge sections of town you have to shut down currently. We're installing valves to prevent that swirling, shutting a block or two down at a time. So in the future, we'll hopefully have to shut down a couple of blocks at a time. When they come through and eventually replace these AC water lines, it's going to be more amazing. Business will be shut down for longer periods of time. Right now, we're just cutting the valve and it's taking one day. I mean, that's about as minimal of a disruption as we can give. And like you said, it's a couple hours notice. And the whole point of putting those valves in is to minimize how many businesses and how many residents are affected per shutdown. So I think that's the whole point of doing this project.
Mayor, I'd like to give the floor over to Dr. Six. I'd like to get it back when he's done.
Dr. Six, you have a question or comment?
I have a comment. I thought it went well. We did move some people around, but given that today was borderline emergency travel-only day, I thought it was great to have something like this.
Thank you. The, I'm concerned, at the moment, for the rest of this project, I am concerned about the few businesses still remaining that are restaurants such as TB's and Fobilla Dilly. That two-day notice is too short for that kind of business.
We have a lot of the schedule out. We'll keep updating those as soon as we can from the contractor. Hopefully, they had to take two weeks off themselves when the below-zero weather. So schedules change, and we will keep updating those as best we can. If we can get longer notices, and some of those are going to shift day-to-day if there's a freeze-out or below-zero temperatures. And that schedule's been out, and we're adhering to it as best as we can. But extreme weather has changed it a little bit of it.
I don't think that that schedule, however, is enough to indicate, a business comes in, looks at that schedule, how do they know that they're going to be affected on any particular day?
Yeah. So I understand your thought process, JB, because I am a business on Main Street. I am a restaurant, and it did affect me. I will say that communication is key in this instance, and every single business had the exact same notice as every other business. And I called Jordan personally, and I had a conversation with him about what I was to, you know, what was going to happen. And he communicated exactly what Chris had said to me and gave me the opportunity to make a decision that was best for my business. Every other business had the exact same opportunity as I did. What they did was their choice. This project is to benefit the whole community. And all of us are going to take a hit at one point or another. And hopefully, this situation won't happen anymore because we're fixing the bad situation.
I don't disagree with you. I just, you know, in the last 10 years, how often have we had to shut down entire blocks in Broadway?
Well, we haven't, but what happens if we do have a major break?
And that's, I guess, my point is, can we learn from this experience so that there's a means of trying to address the needs of businesses which are not households? They can't privily just shut down and walk away.
Well, yeah, that is true, but we always are going to have to take a hit. Everybody was affected. It wasn't like one in particular person.
Everybody in the neighborhood passed.
Evans, do you have a comment?
Okay. Sorry. I want to remind everybody, this is the biggest project towns has had since they paved the streets. And it's not going to be easy. And there's going to be bumps in the road. And we just have to bite our tongues. There's a difference between if they intentionally don't do something or whatever. That's another issue. They're going to run into snakes, just like they ran into the pipe situation today. There'll be more. There's going to be more challenges. We just have to be supportive of the project. And if we hit a roadblock, we team up as a city, as a construction companies, and we address it. And it's, unfortunately, it's not always going to work the way we want. And it's not one business getting a benefit over anybody else's, or others'. It's just the way it is. And we have to keep that in mind when you want to shoot the bullets. Remember, this is a giant project. Biggest one we've ever had. Streets were, Mike, would you agree, was probably the last big, huge project we had?
Yeah.
Of this magnitude. You know, so just keep that in mind. And I'd remind the public of that, too. If we're going to do everything, they're going to do everything they can. They know, they know what they're doing, I can tell you that. But it's just like anything, you're dealing with old, old pipes, old, old stuff. And it's just a fact.
That's, may I conclude, Mayor?
Yes.
My problem wasn't what happened today, but how do we learn from it for the future? Of course, we're all going to learn, you know, deal with what the project is right now.
You can't tell the size of pipers by looking at the asphalt.
No. My problem really wasn't the, that was an unfortunate accident that made a bad situation worse. But how do we get better information? How do we announce what's coming to the businesses who are directly affected by it? By any project at an earlier date? How do we better schedule to try to minimize the impact it's going to have on the town? How do we better inform them that there's going to be no choice? That they just simply have to live with the fact? Are we going to learn nothing from this experience? Or just simply deal with?
What do you want to learn? Every job's going to be different. Every hole's going to be different.
They can't be that different.
It's like...
Communication? That's the issue. You brought that up yourself. But communication is one of the areas that needs to be tried.
Eric, I'll call on you, your arm is up first.
Yeah, I can, I can give you an example of the last three holes that we did and why they're all different. When we did the dig today over a year on Front and B.E. Street, we digged up thinking that we're going to simply replace a valve. Well, guess what? That valve tied into a 90, and then they poured concrete from here over to there. Whoever the concrete driver was had a great day. So now, suddenly, we're looking at this hole, trying to figure out, how do we make this work in a timely fashion? So suddenly, a simple valve replacement goes into, okay, now we're digging back another 10, 16 feet to make sure that their valve sits in there correctly. The same thing happened at the N.C. and Sixth Street over here, coming right off the pump. The storm drain that they ran through was different from the main. I'm sorry, I'm tired. I put in a long day already. But the storm drain and the water line coming across where it teed in, they actually dove the water diked down to come back up. So they have a huge concrete thing and then a storm drain here. So suddenly, a simple valve replacement's all encased in concrete that ties into the storm drain. We can't just chisel that out, so therefore, we're digging back further. So to just say that we're digging simple holes and replacing valves, you can't say that. I mean, you can't. Because suddenly, you're looking at extra fittings, you're looking at extra thrust blocks. Nothing about this is as simple and Legos and putting it together. It's not. You know, it's one of those things that we're scratching our heads trying to figure it out as we go. So, I mean, and that's just two holes, and that one was today, and the other one was, well, it would have been three weeks ago because of the two-week shutdown. So it's not just Legos plug-and-play. It's, we're trying to figure this out as we go. So they're not just simple, it's not just simple plug-and-play. So, there you have it.
I would just like to make the comment that we do need to realize these folks with these construction companies don't have to be here doing these jobs. They've got a lot of work, they've got a lot of work elsewhere. We are competing with both subdivisions for work. And if we're not careful, they won't come. I take care of a lot of these people, and you can smirk all you want, but I know these superintendents, and they don't have to be here. So we need to be gracious, we need to be appreciative that they got it done in the time they did, that they didn't say, "We'll be back tomorrow." Have luck.
Mike?
Yeah, you, any type of construction, and the older it is, the more stuff that you're going to find that's, uh-oh, uh-oh. You know, and you're going to have to be able to follow that. But you know, what we always did, if it was my job, I would tell them when the crew was going to be here. Then, a day before, two days before, I would make sure that the people that were going to be out of power or all that, I'd tell them what was going to happen. Do we have somebody that, on that crew, probably, that could go run around and let everybody know?
They did.
They are doing it. They're giving, they're giving two days' notice, and they're going door-to-door.
Door-to-door.
They just, they, two days' notice, they gave two days' notice, and four hours later, I had business owners coming over asking me what was about to happen to the businesses.
If they want to call it contractor-specific per business, I think that's probably your best bet.
An earlier notice would have helped a lot.
What's that?
An earlier notice would have helped a lot.
I mean, we can ask them. We went from 24 hours to 48, and that's more than most projects that I see in construction. To me, more than beyond that, I think it's business ownership. You have to reach out to the contractor.
They were final order?
They, they're giving 48 now.
48? Everybody's saying forget about it.
Exactly. I mean, that would be my recommendation to the business owners. Contact them directly, or I don't think has any issues. Building those calls, if they have more information than I do, that might be the best bet. And as things are changing, that, to me, would be the best bet if a business is really concerned about that. I think that that might help and might alleviate some of their questions or concerns, and they might be able to explain exactly the situation. Instead of coming in and trying, you're right, trying to read their schedules and trying to figure out where they're at. That might be the best way. Looking at our foundation for a couple of the businesses that, you know, use a lot of water and...
Jeff?
I have a quick question and a comment. What size is the pipeline between here and the tank?
16-inch and 18-inch under the creek.
Okay, thanks.
Or under the canal.
Actually, I agree with JB on this. It doesn't hurt to ask the question and get a discussion because there might always be an opportunity to learn something that might make the next time better. You know, you have weather, you have all kinds of things that you don't, can't anticipate, but I don't think it's a bad thing to say, hey, let's reexamine this and rethink. Do we think of everything? So that's my comment.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Yes, Peter?
Yeah, I was, just thinking through it, you know, something unexpected comes up where they're expecting, you know, the businesses are expecting like two- to four-hour shutdown. And you got something like today that comes up, you know, these concrete blocks or whatever, they're going to have to change their plans. I mean, is there anyone even available on the crew that can communicate that to the businesses? Probably pretty busy already with the manpower you have. I'm not sure if there's even an opportunity, like realistically or logically, or I mean, logistically, to communicate extra information like that. So, you know, maybe it would be better just to communicate from the start that while it's hoped for two to four hours, it could be anywhere from, you know, a day or more, depending on what we find.
The notices that are going right now are for eight hours.
Okay.
Eight-hour assumptions, and anything beyond that's a bonus.
Okay. Well, there you have it, then.
Angie?
I would just like to point out that I contacted Jordan, who is the contact on the letter, with my questions. A couple of my questions Jordan was unable to answer on that phone call and told me that as soon as he knew the answers to those, that he would call me back. And he did call me back and let me know the answers to my questions so that I could make the appropriate decision.
Any other comment?
Well, let's move to something easy like streets and alleys. Are there any questions from council with respect to the street project, street and alley projects that Chris presented?
Do we have a schedule for that yet? I don't think we do.
The proposal was to go to bid...
Bid March 1st, next week, next weekend's, start construction maybe around June. This kind of contractor, depending sometime this summer you're going to build it. So we can give them that flexibility and then start. But that'd be my best guess.
So all of the projects that Chris has mentioned are the projects that council approved during the budgeting process.
If I may, Mayor, this is a good example of the problem. The alley behind my business is one of those that needs to have grading work done to try to keep the water control. If I've got a two-day notice, I've got trucks that got scheduled five days before that for delivery, which means I'll be shutting down either Pine Street or Broadway to unload them if the project doesn't happen to land on the right day. The earlier the notification for a business, like I say, a house, 24 hours is plenty for a house. But for a business, it ought to be really closer to a week to 10 days. And while that may sound outrageous, I've got shipping that has to schedule. And the shipping schedule's majorer than two days.
For like the streets project, I mean, I feel like that one is a little bit different than isolating valves and shutting off water lines. I feel like the access for that, they'll send our schedule. Like, we have that schedule out, you know, a month in advance. If they're doing this work during the summer, they're not going to have a weather shutdown. They'll be able to tell you which, are they going to chip seal first? Are we going to do this opening dig first? You'll get a week's notice on that one.
Thank you.
Any questions from the public or comments? Just would point out our intentions not to have the entire town torn up by the middle of summer, but we are busy this year. Okay. Thank you, Chris. If there is nothing else, we'll let Chris go home. He is, was in Superior earlier today.
Thank you.
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Did I miss the decision on the street project? Are we good to roll with that?
We are good to roll with it because it was part of the budgeting process. We just wanted to have a presentation. Here are these plans, and so that people ask, we can point to something a little more concrete than just numbers on the budget.
Good sir.
Okay. Thank you. Now, I'm going to pop back up into the current business section. We have an AARP grant discussion and decision. There are, this AARP commune, community meeting, increasing the livability. Wait, there are three different grant categories. One of them is a flagship grant, another one is showcase grant, and I can't remember the category. Last time we talked about this opportunity was actually in connection with another item we have a little later, the Big Sky Big Leadership Project on resurfacing or repairing tennis courts. The grant application is, or applications are due March 5th by 5:00 PM Eastern Time, which would be 3 o'clock our time. And I would like to know what council, what direction council might want to take with these.
This is, well, the last idea was in fact, was a resurface project.
Yes, yes. I think there was, it was either so strongly in my head, I thought it was out in front of the public, there was perhaps a suggestion of benches in Holloway Park, seating around Holloway Park.
Do you remember that discussion?
Yes. Oh, good. It wasn't just in my head.
No, it wasn't just in your head.
We can submit multiple applications.
This is, and we've got fundamentally 10 days to do it. With a couple of days' squishy time.
Okay.
I think that's a grand useful grant.
Any other comments from council?
I think a lot of other organizations in the community are looking at hopefully funding some of their projects with this grant that I think are going to be beneficial to the city. So I would like to not compete with them for it.
Which means is not submitting any applications.
Not from the city. The tennis club was, Kurt Woods wanting to submit or possibly something for that grant, and so...
Is that the same organization that's looking to resurface the courts? Wasn't that the discussion we had two weeks ago? Yeah. This is whether the city submits it or whether the city supports it. Kind of the same thing.
Well, I think we support their application for that grant. I don't want to compete against their applications.
I don't think it uses our attention to any people, but I think we're talking about the same thing.
Any other comments from council? At this time, we'll just, we'll move on. Perhaps we'll come back to that in a few minutes. The revised grant proposal for that housing study, this is a resubmission from WWC Engineering to make sure that it, that the proposal matched what we wrote to the grant, to the Department of Commerce. And Carrie, thank you, Carrie looked at it and made sure that the specs in the proposal in front of you match our grant. This is the only bid that we have received for that project. Are there any questions from council?
Mayor, did we talk to the Department of Commerce about shifting the focus?
We did not. It seemed more prudent at this point to make sure we had a proposal that matched the grant we submitted.
This is matching with the grant that we submitted second. It was rejected because it was in competition with the policy grant. The first grant that we submitted was the one about catching capture problem. The second one is suggesting this is how we want to design that, how that would impact the city services.
Carrie, would you share with us what you did when this revised proposal came in?
I went through it line by line with the first proposal and noted the changes that they had made based on the application that was submitted.
The application we submitted to Commerce?
Correct.
The one we submitted in either February or March of last year? Because that's the only one that's going to be working. That's the second one that they denied because it was in competition with the policy grant.
So our first project startup was supposed to be February 2024. Repair draft plan 824. Submit request for proposal.
You're looking at internal details. What was the, what was the proposal summary?
The proposal summary.
The grant summary. This is, I'm the one that wrote both grants, and this is the second one that got rejected.
Mr. Sipper, wherever you're, Mayor, I suspect that you're going to, you mean, one of us, probably you, could go to the Department of Commerce. They had indicated on that first dance mission that while they didn't prefer to shift focus on my grant, that that was not impossible. But then, you come back and announce that we're unfolding this. Because this isn't what's in their hands.
With consensus of council, we will leave this as pending until we get this straightened out. Any objections? We'll be right along. Let's drop down to something that's really easy. Big Sky Big Leadership Project. Who wants to speak on that this evening? Yes, ma'am?
So we are at a standstill of whether you guys were supposed to be checking with your insurance and if we can resurface this spring or if we need to completely redo the tennis courts, since we were wondering what the answer was on that.
I believe the question was, will we be at risk if we do anything at all? And we are.
But there was also a question last time we were here of if we resurfaced it, would it be okay with you being at risk or not being at risk?
She's right.
Okay. My apologies, that escaped my notice. We still need to check on that. I'll tell you that the use of our city parks is at your own risk. But now, having said that, I do believe if the city knowingly lets some of our parks fall into disrepair, there is some risk. Any other questions or comments?
So that's kind of where we're at a standstill. Is, do we work on grant funding to resurface it and get through this spring and then the tennis team can use the courts this year? Or do we focus on writing grants to completely redo the tennis courts?
Did I see a hand back there? Okay.
No.
Okay, just checking.
Phantom hands, Mayor.
When we, when we were talking last meeting, the last time you were here, there was a discussion about how expensive it was going to be to do those tennis courts. If we're going to do a resurfacing, we should do it right. And that can be pretty expensive. And I believe Mr. Langley spoke up and said maybe filling the cracks temporarily would be, would be a better way to go so that the tennis courts and pickleball courts are usable. And in that respect, it is possible that an application to the AARP grant, and I believe it would probably be a flagship project, might be the way to go. Now, there's no guarantee on that, on that project, on that grant funding. The work would have to, the grant proposals are due March 5th, and the work has to be done by December 15th of this year. And that's what I can tell you right now.
I guess we're just, we're hung up on if we can just patch it for the spring and then work on this bigger project, or if we need to just focus on working on the bigger project.
Okay, council, the ask now is, would you be okay with the temporary fix on the tennis courts?
May I ask a question on that? Was John Hahn still involved? Was somebody that can patch that we're talking about? I think they were thinking that was probably the better way to go, just so they're usable while all this grant might be being required. I think they were thinking that was probably the better way to go, just so they're usable while all the scrap might be being acquired or researched or whatever.
As I recall, we were all basically in agreement that this was a great idea. We just were worried about whether M M I A might have had a concern over a mere patch versus a replacement because of the depth of the damage to the surface.
Can't imagine that a patch would outweigh someone being hurt.
No, it's more along the lines of would a patch last long enough that it would just simply put us back at risk again in a short period of time? But if that's something we're not worried about, then by all means, let's move forward.
I'd be grateful for the help in the first place. Mike?
A year ago or so, when Tim and I went up there to the, to the tennis court, there was a guy that was, just wanted to tell us what we were gonna do and he said, what you need to do is, you can do those cracks, but you're gonna be doing them probably halfway in through the season. He says it's not gonna do good because it's the ground underneath and that's where he's telling us. It's like a six-foot dig to get all of the stuff out of there and put some new material there and then you're gonna come on top. So, I mean, that kind of killed the, you know, even talking about it because even the school uses it. And I mean, I don't know if they would, would put in any money in on it and it was just only for us. So it was, it was quite a, I don't remember what he told us, he would talk, it was quite a, a little bit over the water position thing.
Peter?
I can say as a former tennis player, I mean, unless whoever's doing the repairs on the cracks really knows what they're doing, it's still not gonna be a great surface. I mean, they're gonna, the balls are gonna hit those cracks, they're gonna go weird angles. It's not fun to play on courts like that. I have played on them and I did in, in, in high school. There's various courts around Montana and various, you know, states disrepair. So just from a playability standpoint, cracking is very less, much less desirable than just replacing it. But, you know, gotta do what you gotta do to get through the season.
Can I ask Peter for a question?
Yeah.
If we're, if the goal here is not just simply to fill the crack like you would do in a street?
Yeah.
But to patch the crack and then put a surface on it, does that smooth it out enough or do you still have problems?
Ah, you're, so you're talking filling the cracks and then putting a layer over the top, the whole court?
We're kinda looking for a short-term
Yeah.
and then finally a long-term plan and is the short-term plan worth it?